Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley. It is now 5:33 PM. The first presentation is a Business Spotlight, Pottery Barn Outlet. Councilmember Thornton will speak and present the certificate of recognition and the USB to store manager Jackie Hart.
Good evening. Located at 27550 Eucalyptus Avenue in Moreno Beach Plaza, Pottery Barn Outlet provides a vast array of vibrant and unique pieces that are the perfect addition to create a space for any lifestyle. Pottery Barn Outlet staff provides themselves on the high caliber level of one-on-one service with the ultimate goal of helping their customers convert their houses into a home. Pottery Barn Outlet is also invested in the community and has made it a mission to hire locally and partner with local vendors to host pop-up shops. The benefits of shopping at Pottery Barn Outlet includes new inventory every week, promotions with discounts ranging from forty to sixty percent off of ticketed prices, and the ability to see it, buy in a ticket home same day. Today we recognize Pottery Barn Outlet with the Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
At Pottery Barn Outlet, we offer our designer brand furniture at an affordable price. Decorate your bedroom, living room, dining room, and patio with savings of up to sixty percent off. With new merchandise arriving weekly, you'll be able to furnish your home in style. And when you find that perfect piece, you won't have to wait. You can take it home that day.
Let's give them another round of applause.
Pottery Barn Outlet, helping create your best life.
The final presentation this evening is a proclamation recognizing this month as Donate
Representing the business tonight is the store manager Jackie Hart. Would you please come join me at the mic?
Life Month. If we can have Kayla Faust, Gail Henry, and Don Funches come to the microphone.
It is my pleasure to present you with this Business Spotlight certificate and this USB that has the commercial that you can place on your webpage. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, no, we just want to say thank you. I'm representing my store and the team there. We're very, very proud of having this honor. Very excited. So, we are local. We're right up the street at Eucalyptus, so come on in. You will get one-on-one service like she mentioned earlier. We're more than welcome to help you out, but thank you again for the spotlight. We appreciate it. Yeah.
One legacy saves and heals lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation and inspires
Thank you.
our communities to donate life. Nearly one hundred and fourteen thousand Americans are currently waiting for an organ transplant, and nearly twenty-two thousand of those awaiting transplant live in California. Approximately ninety-eight organ transplant take place every day in the United States. Anyone can become a potential organ donor regardless of age, ethnicity, or medical history. In recognition of the great need and the impact that a single donation may have, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley would like to proclaim April as Donate Life California Month. It's my pleasure now to present the following proclamation. Okay, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas millions of lives are saved each year by organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donations, which are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion, and whereas a single individual's donation of various organs can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than seventy-five others, and a single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas over fifteen million Californians have signed up with the state authorized Donate Life California donor registry to ensure their wishes to be organ, eye, and tissue donors are honored, the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, hereby proclaims the month of April 2019 to be DMV Donate Life California Month. In the City of Moreno Valley, and encourage all Moreno Valley residents to agree to save lives by becoming an organ or tissue donor. Please join me in showing our support for Donate Life Month. Here to accept the proclamation is Kayla Faust, Gail Henry, and Don Funches. Kayla, would you like to say a few words?
First, I would like to say thank you to the mayor, the city council members, and the City of Moreno Valley for your support of DMV Donate Life California Month. I am a resident of Moreno Valley, and my son is a deceased donor, so I'm a donor mom. My son passed away in 2009 here in Moreno Valley at what was formerly Riverside County Hospital, and his transplant actually happened here in the City of Moreno Valley. He was able to save the lives of five other children, and this has affected me positively because I have the comfort of knowing that my son is a hero forever. There are families besides our own that think of him daily and are grateful for his gift. I'm very proud and very grateful to represent One Legacy and Donate Life. I encourage all of you to also make a difference by signing up online at the Donate Life California donor registry or at the DMV to register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and ladies and gentlemen that are listening, please become a donor when you renew your driver's license, when you go out and get your first driver's license, because you just never know. And we have a courageous young lady here that I don't know how she can say what she did, but it shows, you know, her bravery and her unselfishness of letting her son be a hero after his death. So, as people that are alive, we still have a chance to donate, so let's do it. And she brings gifts to the city council that I will pass out, so let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so much. And that concludes our special presentations, and we'll stay here to do some photo ops and then reconvene about six o'clock PM for the regular council meeting. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency, for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular city council meeting to order on April 16, 2019, at 6:03 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by, do we have Frank Wright here? No Frank? Okay. Ulysses, would you, council member, would you like to lead us? And then please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Melvin Thomas from Praise and Worship Center.
Everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before you with a quick scripture and a prayer. My scripture is First Timothy, Chapter 2, Verse 1 through 2. It says, "I exhorte thee therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving thanks be made for all men, for kings and all those who are in authority, that they may, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and honesty." So it has been, dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We pray that you allow us, or God, to keep our leaders in prayer, and that you allow us to first and foremost look at those who are in authority and to honor them and to respect them, and that you allow us to lead the lives that you called for us to have. So we thank you on this day. Thank you for all those in attendance. Thank you for the mayor and all those in authority in this city, Lord Father God, and so we thank you and we praise you. In God's name, amen.
Thank you Pastor Thomas. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Thornton?
Present.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hakesnades, City Clerk.
Jessica Lombarena, Administration Assistant.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City.
I don't think the mics are working. Oh, these are all on, oh, they're fixing it. There we go.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Rick Sandsamire, Community Development Director.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Mike Kohler, Moreno Valley Police Department.
Abdul Almat, Pirate Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Director of Human Resources.
Patty Solano, Parks and Community Services Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
All right, thank you. Just a reminder, we do also offer this in Spanish translation services in the back. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar sections A through E on the agenda. So we'll start off with the consent calendars just because, little, a few different things for tonight's meeting. All items listed in the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion of the council. Council items removed for separate action, and then there's also council comments and questions on consent items for discussion. Are there any comments here? Let's see, okay, councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. A-14 and A-17 for comment.
Okay. Go ahead for A-14 comment.
Yeah, so for A-14, first of all, I want to thank our staff, specifically your City Attorney's Office. A-14 is actually a resolution regarding the census for 2020, and I won't read it. If you'd like, it's up on the agenda, you can go through it, but basically, we just wanted to stress the importance of a successful census 2020, because there's a lot of repercussions that can come out of it. For example, allocation of funds from the federal government for our schools, for all the states, counties, cities, so it's very important to have an accurate count of all the people in our country. Also, it affects representation with the House of Representatives, so there's a potential to change the districts. So that's why it's very important, and I just wanted to point this out because it's something that I'm hoping a lot of people really get involved, and if not volunteer, then potentially even help for people to participate in the census. So just wanted to point that out. And the next one is A-17. That's in regards to the Cycle Four Active Transportation Program Grant. It's about eight million dollars that we're getting in grant funding from the federal government for the San Juan Baptista de Anza Trail. So if you look on Google Maps, you can see a diagonal trail cutting through the city, and there's some parts of it that are still not complete, so this eight million dollar grant, eight and a half million dollars, is going to help to complete almost the rest of the trail to connect to Lake Paris. So I just want to say thank you to staff again for helping make this happen, and over the next two years, we're going to construct it, so really looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. And I also echo councilmember Cabrera's comments on A-14, the census, and just want to commend him for his leadership in bringing up the item, you know, in order for us to recognize and bring more awareness about the census to our community, so thank you for doing that. Now we'll move to public comments on consent items other than separate action items, so this is if you have any comments related to the consent calendar only, so not related to anything else on the agenda. So Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Before we move forward, just for the record, and I apologize for interrupting, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Putnam, on the item B4, both councilmember Marquez and the mayor have, are recusing themselves on that because their property lies within the landscape district. So just as a reminder for the record, thank you.
And councilmember Marquez and myself. Okay, entertain a motion to approve consent calendar except with that recusal of B4 for councilmember Marquez and myself.
Move as amended.
Okay, so motion by Mayor Pro Tembaca, second by councilmember Cabrera, please vote. And the consent calendar is approved as amended, including that recusal, and it carries. Okay, we'll move straight to F1, which is CDBG, Public Hearing to Approve CDBG Home and ESG Project Selections for Inclusion. We'll go ahead and start with Report of the Financial and Management Services District.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Members. Every year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. The annual action plan identifies how the city will allocate certain federal grants that we receive, being the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. As part of this annual action plan, we kind of walk through the allocations with the sub-receipients. We have multiple public meetings, along with an opportunity for those sub-receipients to review or provide comments to the Technical Review Committee. Based on this process, what we're bringing forward tonight is allocation similar to the prior years with regards to Community Development Block Grants. The city receives about 2.1 million dollars. We'd be looking to fund the existing sub-receipients from the prior year as they performed well and move, continue to provide benefit to our community. So, just a couple things I wanted to note on the CDBG. Historically, we have funded the Employment Resource Center out of that, about 66,000. That has been moved to the general fund, which has allowed some additional increases to those sub-receipients, so that gets more money back into the community, such as the MoVan program and others. Additionally, we've added the US Vets $30,000 for transitional assistance housing out of CDBG, so that's new funding that they'll receive out of that component this year. And one other new sub-recipient is the New Hope Vision Center Summer Academy, so we've added $10,000 for them that will provide basically summer programs for about 350 children in the City of Moreno Valley. When we look at the, oh, and let me just add one thing on the CDBG is, we do have an allocation within there in excess of $850,000 that will go towards street improvements within our community. With the Home Investment Partnership, those programs usually are allocated towards affordable housing projects. We're continuing to fund the Brush with Kindness Programs with Habitat for Humanity that helps improve those low-income households, and we're also looking at earmarking some funds for potential development with Mary Erickson Community Housing. We'll have to come back to council with an actual site and the specifics on the development, but we wanted to make you aware, kind of earmark those funds, and move forward with them to craft what we would bring forward as an exclusive negotiation agreement for a site, some of the parameters of projects, so that would come back at a later date with an opportunity for you to approve the specific project. And with regards to our last federal funding source here, the Emergency Solutions Grant, the city receives about $175,000 a year towards outreach for the homeless individuals. In this area, what we're looking at is, we've been alternating some funding between different entities or nonprofits in the community, and to provide greater outreach to our homeless individuals, we're looking at bringing a new entity this year, which is the Social Work Action Group. They'll be working in the community in collaboration with Habitat, or sorry, with the Salvation Army as well, so we'll have additional resources out there for our homeless this year to make sure they're getting the services that they need and have those proper connections. Now, tonight's public hearing represents one of the public hearings in a series of meetings conducted over this city's action plan. The second public hearing will occur on May 7, and the full details of all the allocations are set forth in Attachment 1 to the staff report, and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Marshall. Any council questions of staff? Seeing there's none, I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. We have one. Jessica Munoz.
All right. Ms. Munoz?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you briefly about our application for CDBG funds this year. My name is Jessica Munoz, and I'm the Executive Director for Voices for Children in Riverside County. We are the court-appointed Special Advocate Program for Riverside County, which means that we have the unique responsibility and privilege to recruit and train and support very special volunteers who advocate for children in foster care. These children, as you know, have been abused and neglected and removed from their homes through no fault of their own, and while their care and well-being is managed by capable and competent professionals, the social workers, attorneys, and ultimately judges who make decisions in their cases are overwhelmed with the sheer volume of cases and the bureaucratic unwieldy system, and this is where our volunteers step in. Our volunteers are community members who receive professional support and guidance to be able to advocate for these children on a one-on-one basis, to be able to get to know the child, and then leverage that relationship to make arguments in the child's best interest to the judge and others involved in their care. In speaking with our judges recently, we were both pleased and enthusiastic when they reminded us that one of the greatest ways that we can serve children in Moreno Valley and beyond is to make sure that they have what they need, not only to survive, but thrive, and we do that not only by advocating for what they need today and what we anticipate they will need to be successful adults, but by ensuring that they have access to education, to special education resources, to tutoring, to extracurricular activities, and all the things that make childhood proper for a child. So we are so grateful that once again, we've been recommended to receive the funding and are particularly grateful that the funding includes a little bit more than we've received in the past. This additional funding will make it possible for us to continue to serve more children in Moreno Valley, and we are truly, truly grateful for the recommendation that your support grow along with us. So thank you for your support in the past, and I'd respectfully request that you continue to support us in the future. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Munoz. Thank you for all you do as well. Madam Clerk?
No more speakers.
Okay. Any deliberation on this item? Okay, councilmember Cabrera?
Very quickly, I want to point out the new allocation for the Social Work Action Group, also known as SWAG, so that's something that I'm really happy to see because the Homeless to Work Program was extremely successful and is extremely successful, and now we're trying to target a new population of homeless folks out on the street, so really trying to target those who have problems with drug addictions. So that's what this new allocation is, about $90,000 from the federal government that we're getting through CDBG, so we'll be able to help not all of them, but even just a handful of folks that were able to get off the street and get them clean off of whatever drug they're suffering from. That'll be a huge benefit to our community, so I'm really happy to see that, and I just want to say thank you.
Seeing there's no further deliberation, I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two and three. Motion moved by Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Go ahead and please vote. Okay, and the motion carries. We'll go straight to item F2, which is the General Plan Amendment and Change of Zone for approximately 19.7 acres of the western leaning portion of a 36.8 acre project site and a plot plan for a 768,000-square-foot industrial logistics building associated with site improvements. Phase 2 for Highland Fairview Corporate Park, and we'll have a report from the Community Development Department, and what we'll do is, we'll have the staff report, and then we'll do council questions to the staff, and then I'll open the hearing, and then we'll go with a public testimony, and then the applicant. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce our contract staff planner, Jeff Swak, to make the presentation.
Mayor Gutierrez, members of the City Council, good evening. Tonight, the project before you is Phase 2 of the Highland Fairview Corporate Park Project. This project consists of four components. The first component is a plot plan for a 768,000-square-foot industrial logistics building on 36.8 acres. The location is on the northeast corner of Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus Avenue. There's also a general plan amendment and a zone change on 19.7 acres, a portion of the site that is currently zoned for commercial and general plan designated for commercial as well. And then we're requesting a text amendment to add text to two sections of the general plan amendment under the circulation element and Chapter 9, which are goals and objectives, to allow consideration of innovative right-of-way design solutions, and then finally, an addendum to the EIR, which was certified by the City Council in 2009. The project site, as you see it before you, is bounded on the north side by State Route 60, on the west by Redlands Boulevard, the south is Eucalyptus Avenue, and the east edge is World Logistics Center Parkway. You can see the major building on the property, that's the Skechers Building, 1,820,000 square feet. The parcels in red are what we're focusing on tonight, the ones closest to Redlands Boulevard. As you can see from the aerial, the majority of land surrounding the site, north of the freeway, west and south are vacant or underdeveloped. North of the freeway, you do have commercial and office-zoned property, which is undeveloped. On the west side of the site, on the west side of Redlands Boulevard on the corner, is a piece of property which is also zoned commercial, which is vacant and undeveloped, and west of that is the Aldi's Distribution Center. To the south is the specific planned area for the World Logistics Center, vacant, and that will be developed as industrial. There is no residential component to that specific plan. And then east of the site, as I mentioned before, is the Skechers Building. Now, it's important to note that with the development of a 768,000-square-foot industrial building, all the costs are incurred by the developer for the private property as well as for the public property. What you will get is improved property values, generation of sales tax, those are generated to the city as revenue, and creation of jobs. Oops. Disappeared. I want to compare the project as it was approved in 2009 to what's being requested tonight, because there is a change. Back in 2009, there were three phases of the project. The first phase included the development of the Skechers Building, which exists. Phase 2 is development, proposed development of a 6,000-square-foot industrial building, and then 80,000 square feet of retail commercial, which is shown on this exhibit on the far eastern edge of the site at World Logistics Center Parkway and Eucalyptus Avenue. The third phase would be development of the far westerly edge, shown in red, adjacent to Redlands Boulevard, and that would be 120,000 square feet of commercial retail. What's being proposed a piece of property which is also zoned commercial, which is vacant and undeveloped. And west of that is the Aldi's Distribution Center. To the south is the specific planned area for the World Logistics Center, vacant, and that will be developed as industrial. There is no residential component to that specific plan. And then east of the site, as I mentioned before, is the Skechers Building. Now, it's important to note that with the development of a 768,000-square-foot industrial building, all the costs are incurred by the developer for the private property as well as for the public property. What you will get is improved property values, generation of sales tax, those are generated to the city as revenue, and creation of jobs. Oops. I want to compare the project as it was approved in 2009 to what's being requested tonight, because there is a change. Back in 2009, there were three phases of the project. The first phase included the development of the Skechers Building, which exists. Phase 2 is development, proposed development of a 6,000-square-foot industrial building, and then 80,000 square feet of retail commercial, which is shown on this exhibit on the far eastern edge of the site at World Logistics Center Parkway and Eucalyptus Avenue. The third phase would be development of the far westerly edge, shown in red, adjacent to Redlands Boulevard, and that would be 120,000 square feet of commercial retail. What's being proposed in 2019 for tonight is the elimination of the 120,000-square-foot commercial component adjacent to Redlands Boulevard, and then changing the general plan and zoning for that area so that it is all industrial, that it will allow that area, which is shown in black, to all be blue, a blue state. So in essence, the general plan will change from commercial to business park, and the zoning would change from community commercial to light industrial, allowing the development of an industrial building. Now, as you can see, there is a division between the two parcels. If the City Council chooses to take action to approve this tonight, subsequently, an administrative action will occur that will combine the two parcels into one to allow the development. In addition to the general plan amendment, which I mentioned, which is number one, there is, at the bottom of this slide, a recommendation to add text to two different chapters of the general plan. This would be allow this to be considered citywide, and of course, apply to this project. The additional language would go into Section 5.1 of the circulation element and then Section 5.512 of the goals and objectives section of the general plan. And I'll just read the first sentence because that lays the groundwork as to why this is important. It's to consider innovative design and program solutions to improve mobility, efficiency, connectivity, and safety of the transportation system. It goes on to describe what sorts of right-of-way improvements would achieve that goal, and what's important to this project would be the consideration of a traffic circle or a roundabout, such as the one that is outside of City Hall. So if you look at the site plan and you focus on the southwest corner, that's the intersection of Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus, there is a proposal to have a traffic roundabout. And roundabouts are very effective and they're very beneficial. And the reason for that is they tend to calm traffic, slow it down. They reduce greenhouse gas emissions because you don't have a signalized intersection where a car would stop and then idle. You have traffic moving slowly, making a left-hand turn, so it reduces greenhouse gas emissions. There are fewer accidents because you don't have a confluence of a variety of streets where people want to go straight or make right turns or left turns. It is a slow circular motion. And then for the city, the long-term benefits are financial because you're not paying for the electricity, excuse me, for the signalized intersection or the ongoing maintenance, the long-term maintenance of signals. So there are two traffic signals proposed, one at Redlands and Eucalyptus, and one further east on Eucalyptus Boulevard, which is the major entrance to this proposal. In addition, on Redlands Boulevard, the improvements on the right-of-way would include the curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the east side. There is also a proposal, not a proposal, requirement to add a Class 1 bike trail, which would be between the sidewalk and the property, so it's a bike trail 10 foot wide. There's also improvements along Eucalyptus Avenue. Right now, it's one lane of traffic. The improvements associated with this development will add two westbound lanes of traffic, a raised median, which is consistent with what's in front of the Skechers Building to the east, and then one lane of traffic that's eastbound, south of the median. In addition, there will be a multi-use trail along Eucalyptus on the north side that will connect to World Logistics Center Parkway, all the way to Redlands Boulevard. And that will be north of the street, 10-foot-wide area. The land has already been dedicated to the city when the parcel map was recorded to allow the Skechers project to be built. So the inclusion of those two trails are conditioned by no less than seven conditions of approval. They will be subject to a public, to an agreement between the applicant and the city that will dictate the timing for the installation of those improvements, but that would occur prior to occupancy of the building. If you look at the site, it's surrounded by landscaping. It's important to note that the elevation of the freeway is approximately 25 to 30 feet higher than the elevation of this property, so there'll be a very large slope from the freeway down to the site with trees and landscaping that'll buffer any of the loading docks that are on the north side of the building facing the freeway. The visibility will be blocked, as well as the height of the building, the scale and massing of the building will be reduced because of that tall, because of the height difference between the freeway and this building itself. Landscaping continues around Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus Avenue. The city has conditions that require that at a major entrance or a corner, so it'd be at Redlands and Eucalyptus, that additional landscaping be added because it's the entrance not only to this project, but in the future, the entrance to the World Logistics Center, a specific plan that will be developed on the south side of Eucalyptus. The remaining areas shown in white on the southeastern west are employee parking, or if Skechers will be the tenant, decide to have a retail component that will be for customer parking as well. The blue rectangle in the southwest, near the southwest corner of the building, are reflective, are water treatments. Because that is the major entrance to the area, to the development off of Redlands, there will be a flat area for the reflection pool. There will be then a two-story addition, office addition that will be covered in glass. And then the building behind it, that the office is attached to, is 55 feet in height. So it will step up from the corner to the height of the building, which gives a simple but elegant solution and treatment for that corner. Surrounding the building, the last comment is, you have a 30-foot-wide fire access completely surrounding the building. The building will be sprinkled. The building will be LEED certified as well, similar to what the Skechers Building is, so it will meet and/or exceed the requirements in the building code. This building, this project as conditioned, will meet all of the standards of the Moreno Valley Municipal Code for parking setbacks, et cetera. I won't name all of them because there's hundreds. We've spent a lot of time making sure that the project does meet or exceed the requirements of the code. The next slide shows images of the elevation of the project. This building will be concrete tilt-up, similar to the Skechers Building, and be compatible in the design, color, and materials that are used. So you'll have a concrete building that is painted a neutral color. There will be glass additions, metal accents. The top elevation is what you'll see from the freeway. The second elevation is what's visible from Eucalyptus Avenue on the south side. The third elevation is the easterly elevation, and the bottom elevation is what you will see from Redlands Boulevard. So you see the building, the two-story glass office building, and approximately 35 to 40 feet high section of glass behind it to step up the improvements to the building For the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, the applicant is proposing an addendum to the original environmental impact report certified by the council back in 2009. CEQA allows this if it meets a few tests. First of all, it is, the project as proposed has to be a minor change to what was considered back in 2009. And also, the impacts, the impacts proposed from the project in 2019 cannot be any more severe than those originally considered back in 2009, which is definitely the case. So the major change, as I mentioned, is elimination of the 120,000-square-foot of commercial development on the northeast corner of Redlands and Eucalyptus. Think about a small neighborhood shopping center, maybe larger neighborhood shopping center, the amount of track trips that are generated per day. That would be far and away exceeding what's proposed for trips for an industrial building such as this. Now, in closing, the City Council has been provided with a handout. And we're requesting the first two items in the handout. The first one requests council's action, and the second two are just to receive and file. So the first two items, the first item, there is, it's a housekeeping item, a typographical error in the resolution approving the plot plan. There was a reference to the Planning Commission. I apologize for that oversight. It should refer, of course, to the City Council. So that has been changed, and so we would request that you would approve that resolution, which is attached. Number two, there is a resolution requesting the certification of the addendum to the environmental impact report. In working with the attorney representing the applicant and the city attorney, out of an abundance of caution, they are recommending that we add a couple of considerations to the body of the resolution that reflect that the commercial component of the original project along Redlands Boulevard, or at the northeast corner of Redlands Boulevard and Eucalyptus, is no longer part of the project, for clarity, to be perfectly clear. And that by doing that, by eliminating that possibility of developing 120,000 square feet of commercial at that corner and replacing it by a larger industrial building, the impacts of the industrial building are by far less than what was originally anticipated in the EIR back in 2009. The applicant, over the course of the past 10 years, has looked at getting commercial developers to build that corner, because that was what was proposed. There have been no commercial developments. And as I mentioned in looking at the aerial, there's a lot of property surrounding the overall site that is potentially available for commercial development, but nothing's happened yet. The market is not strong enough for commercial development. So with the specific plan for the, to the south, for the, I'm having a brain fade here, for our World Logistics Center specific plan on the south side of Eucalyptus, only having industrial development, there is really not a demand for the property on the far west edge to be commercial. So the resolution itself will reflect the evolution of the project and that the industrial project, by being built, will generate property tax, sales tax to the city. It will create a facility for jobs for the community as well. So those are the changes in that resolution. And then also, they're adding a condition to the approval that asks the City Council to approve a statement of overriding consideration that basically states by eliminating the commercial and adding industrial, that it will result in those benefits that I've already mentioned. So it's a lot of explanation, but the impact is just basically to reflect what's being proposed in the project tonight. The second and third items, number three, there is a request by the public at the Planning Commission that the Planning Commission adopted some changes to the mitigation monitoring measures, because nine of those had been met over the course of 10 years. They had been met, they no longer apply, or because of the development of the specific plan in the future on the south, they're no longer appropriate. So in the mitigation measure, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, it identified that these nine would be deleted and the reason that they would no longer be appropriate. But they didn't list what the mitigation measures were, so the list that you have in front of you tonight to receive and file identifies those nine mitigations, measures, just for clarity. Now, the last item, there were two letters received by Mr. George Hague, one on March 28th, which was included as part of your packet, and one was received this morning, which was similar to what we saw in, on March 28th. So what you're being provided tonight, in addition, is a letter with responses to Mr. Hague's comments. Now, when you look through that, it might seem like a lot of information is being provided at the last minute. And there is a lot of data, but please understand, staff has been looking at this data, staff and a variety of departments, to make sure that there is nothing that would change the recommendation that's being provided to the City Council tonight. That basically, by looking at the comments, there is nothing that would change the studies that have been given to you. Your staff report's almost three inches thick. A lot of that is the background data and studies that have been done recently, at the end of 2018, beginning of 2019, to prove that conditions haven't changed, or if they have changed, there's no greater impacts. So because of that, this project as it is conditioned, meets the intent and meets the municipal code, and the project as conditioned also responds and meets the provisions of the settlement agreement that was entered into in 2010, which was attached to your packet as well. So with that, I know it's a lot of information, but please understand that the staff would not be recommending approval of this item, even with these changes, if we didn't believe that there are no substantive changes in the responses given to Mr. Hague or to the settlement agreement or to anything else. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you for the very thorough report as well. Thank you. Okay, we will have any council questions of staff or to... Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I read some of this. I was up till about 1:30 this morning reading on this, and my eyes are starting to do weird things to me, so I hope I can understand the majority of this. But my question is, I have two questions. One, the general plan is only asking for a zone change, basically.
Actually, we're asking for two things. As you've mentioned, the general plan amendment, so we want to change the designation of the 19.7 acres, the red area. The general plan designation is commercial, and the zoning is community commercial. So we're asking for changing of both. The general plan would be business park, and the zoning, implementing zoning, would be light industrial, so it becomes blue.
Okay. Second question.
Mr., I'm sorry, Councilmember, there's two components to the general plan amendment. There are multiple elements in a general plan, so I want to make sure we're amending the land use element, which changes the land use designation of the site. The circulation element also is being amended to include language in there to provide the clarification about the innovative design solution. So those are two specific elements of the general plan that are being amended by this. The other component is in Chapter 9 of our general plan, is where we compile all the goals and objectives. And since we're adding that language into Chapter 5, which is the circulation element, we're reflecting the same language in the goals and objectives, which gives us the tool to implement that as we go forward when we review projects. Hope that clarifies.
And the second question is, Skechers got a warehouse down the street from here. Do you know, or maybe Mr. Banzev is here, maybe he can answer that at the right time. Is that facility going to be moved to this new facility, which is down the street here?
I'm sure that the applicant can address. My understanding is that Skechers will use both, the existing facility, and there is a connection for the proposed building of 768,000 square feet that Skechers, to my understanding, is also looking at leasing that building as well.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Continue with council questions of staff. We have... Councilmember Thornton?
I've got one question. In the beginning, I think the very first slide, is that the first slide? Could you go back to it? So in the beginning, when you first spoke, you mentioned all of the land surrounding the area. Did you say that north of the site is zoned for...
So on the north side of the freeway?
Yes.
On the north side of the freeway, you have properties that are zoned for commercial and office use?
Okay, and residential, too, R1.
Further north, correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing there's no further council questions of staff, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. Does the applicant wish to provide any testimony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here, just on time. I actually landed a few minutes ago, so I'm glad I could make it on time. I've heard the staff presentation at the Planning Commission hearing, and it was very thorough, so there's really nothing technical I could add, except that we value Skechers in our city. They were one of the pioneers that came in and made a major commitment. Fortunately, they have grown. They now need an additional facility, and that's a homegrown company. We have a company that's come to town. Their entire North American operations distribution is handled from this location. They've now grown in the city. Like you said, Councilmen, they have leased another building in town, and now they need yet another building, which is the building they will be building, and will be connected by a conveyor bridge between the two buildings. So they're expanding their operation. And hopefully, that will continue, so they can move from what they have now in those three buildings and potentially into larger facilities in the future. They've done well, and we continue to support them, and I'm sure they appreciate the city very much's support. And it's really a testimony to Moreno Valley, the staff and the council. very much's support, and it's really a testimony to Moreno Valley, the staff and the council. A company doesn't expand in a city that they don't love to be in, a city that treats them right, a city that they feel comfortable being in and expanding in. And I was particularly delighted to hear from them a couple weeks ago, that there's over 400 Moreno Valley residents, people from Moreno Valley actually working in the facility. So they've actually provided lots of jobs for people in Moreno Valley, which is something we've worked on very, very hard for a long time to bring. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know you had some questions, perhaps staff already answered them, but if there's any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, all right, we will move to, Councilor Marquez?
No, I'm trying.
Okay. We'll move straight to a public testimony of speakers. We do have actually a lot of speakers tonight, so in order to allow all speakers to speak and to get to the vote, because I know a lot of you do want to get to that, of course, again, I will allow all the speakers to speak, so if you can please come to the podium, the time limit will be reduced, but again, it's in order for us to allow everyone to speak and to get to the vote. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the first three?
Yes, sir.
It'll be one minute.
Sandra Murphy, Florentino Arequen, Alejandra Flores.
And if you could please state your position, that would also help the council let us know whether you support it or you don't as well. Okay, first three is, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Murphy, and I'm representing myself, I'm a resident of Moreno Valley for 25 years, and I am supporting this project because it's confirmation that the business is doing well, the city, it's been benefit, the residents been benefit with all this, and what else, what other proof that we need to really help this company? We helping Skechers, actually, and we helping the community, not Mr. Benzeyv, so to me, it's just, well done, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Murphy, next speaker, please.
Florentino Arequen, Alejandra Flores, Steve Medina.
And if the other three could please be ready, so that way we can just kind of get going?
Hello, my name is Alejandra, and I want to say yes, Skechers had given me an opportunity to pay my bills, I'm close, I'm like five minutes from Skechers, it's been a big impact in my life. I just retired from the state a couple months ago, and I'm here right now, local, from my house to Skechers, and I'm just grateful that it's here, and it's helped a lot of single parents that had no jobs and no education, and they've been progress paying their bills and putting, providing food on their table for their kids.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Alejandro Flores, oh, that was Alejandro, I mean, sorry, Florentino? Is Florentino here? Okay? Okay, next speaker is Steve Medina, followed by Donald Avery and Marshall Scott. If you could please stand and be ready, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Council. In one minute, I just want to say, thank you for hearing everyone here today. I've been here in Riverside for over 25 years, I'm a self-employed person, I'm the guy that you hire to fix your house, remodel your home, do a lot of things. I have years, and I've seen a lot of good positive things come out of this, that are going to come out of this, and I just want to encourage council to really consider even future endeavors with Highland Fairview. I've been around for a while, I've seen nothing but positive things come from this facilities, or that's going to come from those facilities. I have and know people that are employed at these facilities, and they're doing very well, they're very excited, it's a very positive atmosphere where they're working. So I just want to encourage and thank you, council, for listening and giving an ear to people that are really interested in these projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medina.
The next three speakers are Donald Avery, Marshall Scott, and Eunice Kang.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm pleased to be here today, and I'm just in support of the Fairview Highland project, the Skechers project. I've been here for about 33 years, I've seen lots of things take place here, I've seen other cities grown with corporate businesses and things like that, excel with tax benefits and other things, and I think our city is highly needed of these projects to take place here, and so I would like all your support to be supportive of this project of World Logistics Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery, and thanks for coming.
Marshall Scott, Eunice Kang, Asli Rivera.
Is Marshall Scott here? I don't see him. Okay, we'll go with, going once, no, okay, all right, Eunice? I think they can hear us outside, right? Yeah, they can hear us, okay. All right, so Eunice?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for letting me speak. I'm Eunice Kang, I've lived in the city for 20 years, I'm a retired software engineer for 20th Century Fox, I'd like to speak in favor of Highland Fairview's plans to rezone for Skechers. Skechers has been a very good company in our community, they've provided us jobs, they've a nice little retail outlet, and also money for our city. And I used to commute 165 miles a day to Century City and back, and I sympathize with all the parents that have to do the same, so we need more jobs here, we need more money for our city, fix some of them potholes, and so I'm definitely in favor of this rezoning as well as all the plans of Highland Fairview to bring even more jobs and more money to our city.
Thank you so much, Eunice, appreciate it. Okay, next three speakers is Asli Rivera, Santiago Hernandez.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Protem Baca, and then council members and staff. My name is Asli Rivera, and I'm actually for this, and to be honest, I started off a long time ago as against it, and I've developed into loving this idea, because we are moving into, every year we've developed innovative ideas through you guys and through our community, and I want to continue to evolve in that direction, and if we can develop ideas like Adidas has, and making eco-friendly shoes, and we can possibly continue that movement and making it eco-friendly entirely 100%, because I believe that environment is important, and I believe that our community is important, and having parents at home, that's definitely just as important. We need morals, and we need ethics, and that's exactly what I've seen from you guys, and we need to continue to show that for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera, thank you.
The next three speakers, Santiago Hernandez, Tom Jorrell, and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, councils and the best staff in County of Riverside. Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Protem Baca, Norton, Council Norton, District Two, and Ulises Cabrera, and Council Market of District Three. This evening I come to support the rezoning of Skechers. I think it's a great company to come to this city. I think, I've been here for more than a quarter of century, and I've been, I've been seeing a lot of, a lot of changes on this time. So the Skechers come here to make a difference on our status of living, and I will support them, and it's good for our city, for our residents.
Thank you, Santiago.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next three speakers?
Tom Jorrell, Roy Blackard, and Nelly Menjivar.
And just so you know, there will also be an opportunity in public comments on non-agendas as well, so after this item, there'll be public comments as well. Okay, go ahead.
Tom Jorrell, speaking on behalf of myself and the Sundance Center, where I spent a bit of time, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of staff and the public, thank you for this opportunity. We support this project, and I'll just say ditto to the previous speakers, they're hitting it right on. Four main points, one, it's a logical continuation of established development patterns for the area. Two, the landlord Highland Fairview has proven to be not only a quality builder developer, but also a quality, community-involved landlord, he keeps up his property exemplary, and it's good for the community. Three is saying to an established, high-profile, high-quality business, in this case Skechers, that we appreciate your company, and we want you to expand and grow in our city. And four, the change out of the commercial zoning is logical and warranted, I'm in that business, and there's no market for it right now, it's a logical step forward. So thank you for hearing my comments, and have a good meeting.
Thanks, Tom.
Roy Blackard, Nelly, and Tony Reza.
You have an extraordinary opportunity tonight, you better take advantage of it. Again, it's not about Mr. Skechers and all those, it's about the people and the 400 people that are working here now, and as we discussed last night, the people that were making 10, 11 bucks an hour in Ontario that are now making 20 and 25 and seeing a better opportunity in our city. That's why you should pass this project, you should do the general plan amendment, so we can fix all this stuff that hasn't been fixed, so we can move on further, so when Skechers does expand from the number two casual wear company in the world to number one, that we have the facilities and policies in place to expand with them and take advantage of that. That's what we should be doing, that's what we should be looking for, and putting away all the extraneous BS that goes on, and get the job done, get it done, and get it done fast.
Thank you, Roy.
Nelly, Tony Reza, and?
Good evening, everyone, I hope everyone's doing great. My name is Nelly Menjivar, I am 100% in support of this project, thank you so much for the time you allowed me to speak on behalf of the project. I've seen Highland Fairview go above and beyond to provide the awareness, to provide the education to its community, and the key word here is education, people need to be educated, they need to be told the good, the bad, and the ugly, so that they can make a decision based on facts and not just opinions or their feelings. The people who are against this project, instead of actually scaring people into believing that their children are going to die of cancer, or just scaring them with the trucks are in, the dust is going to kill everybody, they should really encourage people to get the facts themselves, to get the education themselves, and that way they can make an informed opinion and an informed decision, again, based on facts. My family and I are so grateful that a company like Highland Fairview is willing to invest in our city, so I'm super grateful, and I thank you so much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Nelly. Next three speakers is Tony Reza, Danita Sanchez, and Michael Gomez, and Pastor Reza, you'll have translator?
Will help me, yeah.
Okay, so per the law, we double it, okay?
Is it working?
Yes.
Okay, oh, thank you, thank you.
So we double the time because of state law.
Okay. Pues buenas tardes a todos, vengo como?
Good evening, everyone.
Residente de Moreno Valley.
I am a resident of Moreno.
Por más de 20 años, casi 25.
Almost 25 years.
Solo para decirles que estamos 100% convencidos absolutamente, que este es uno de los mejores proyectos en el mundo, que tuvimos la oportunidad de traerlo aquí en Moreno Valley. Familias van a ser bendecidas, la ciudad va a ser bendecida, habrá más trabajos en Skechers con el Centro Logístico, y algo maravilloso en la tecnología de punta.
And something wonderful with the technology.
No debemos preocuparnos por el aspecto negativo.
We should not be worried about the negative aspect.
Oh, lo contrario.
Completely the opposite.
Debemos ser felices.
We should be very happy.
De que va a haber trabajos.
That there will be jobs.
Más de 20,000 trabajos.
More than 20,000 jobs.
Familias que van a ser bendecidas.
Families that will be blessed.
Tenemos gente que trabaja en Skechers.
Here we have people that work at Skechers.
Tenemos miles que trabajan fuera.
But we have thousands that work outside of the city.
Manejar horas.
That need to drive hours, day and night.
Y eso puede cambiar.
And that can change.
Para bien de las familias.
For the betterment of the families.
El monto de la inversión es maravilloso.
The amount of the investment is marvelous.
3,000 millones de dólares?
3 million dollars.
Para beneficio.
Oh, 3, 3 million?
3,000 millones.
3,000.
Para beneficio nuestra ciudad.
For the benefit of our city.
Más impuestos.
More, more taxes.
Cientos de trabajos, miles de trabajos.
Hundreds of jobs.
Yo les invito.
And I invite you.
A votar sí.
To vote yes.
Esta ciudad.
The city.
Necesita de hombres valientes y mujeres valientes.
Needs more brave men and women.
Que le amen.
That love it.
Y que le provean lo mejor.
And that give it the best.
Y este es un gran proyecto.
And this is a great project.
Va a cambiar la vida de mucha gente.
That will change the lives of many people.
Vamos todo su apoyo.
We ask for your support.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, Pastor, gracias pastor, and thank you, Nelly, as well, for the translation, appreciate it. Okay, we have, and I just want to commend the audience for being very respectful and following all the decorum rules, thank you for that. We'll go with the next three speakers, Madam Clerk?
Danita Sanchez, Michael Gomez, and Gabriel Colangelo. Colangelo.
On this day, Tuesday, 16, 2019, it is an honor for me to be here once again, in front of the city council, our Mayor Esteban Gutierrez, and city staff, and with this general audience here, too. The purpose of this speech is to present the petition that has been previously been expressed before about the additional expansion of the Skechers Distribution Center. My name is Danira Sanchez, at your service, and I represent our community here in the city of Moreno Valley. I want to express that this new project will be a great benefit to the community, as well as to our city, which includes a contribution of jobs, opportunity to our residents here, and other neighboring communities at the same time. It will bring economic benefits to our city, like other members had said already, okay? This means that they no longer need to search elsewhere for a job, when they're, when in their city, they can find opportunities with well-paid salaries and benefits for their workers.
Thank you, Danita, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next three speakers, please.
Michael Gomez, Gabriel, and Deborah Craig.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me to have this platform tonight. Me and my best friend Alejandro here, we're pretty much the heart of Skechers, we're the, I'm here to represent the working class of Skechers, I'm an equipment operator, so I'm there pretty much 12 hours a day, six, sometimes seven days a week. I've witnessed the tours that are done there by people all over the world that want to know how this company is made, they want to make one just like it, these are our future architects, that are, take tours from universities, they're in school, and, you know, they pull me to the side, they ask me a ton of questions, they, they're like, wow, you work in this place, this place is state-of-the-art, it's awesome, and it's, the way it's kept, kept outside, it's immaculate, you know, very eco-friendly. I want to say that we work here, we spend our money in this city, we love our city, and we're passionate about our jobs, and we need more jobs in this community. Every time we see a brand-new place opened up, whether it's a fast-food place, we get excited, because that's more opportunities for our city. That's what's going to make our city great and shine brighter than others. I've said it time and time again, there's places like San Bernardino, man, you can go through some of them desolate, desolate places, and they're really tore up. All I see is desolation and desperation, and, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
We don't want our homeless club getting bigger than our workforce, and so do the right thing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Fill your hearts, bless us, bless your city, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, so, a lot of new people since I spoke here last time, it was a lot, lot more tense last time when I was here, it was over the World Logistics Center approval. So honestly, I have no clue where you guys are at on this, on this project, so just speaking generally, you know, I heard the word, I think I heard the phrase, it's kind of the logical next step tonight, something to that effect, and that's where I'm pretty much coming from. I would say, you know, where we're at, I think there were good people on both sides last time. last time, you know, trying to decide the fate of our city. I've been out here since 1980. I used to live in Redlands Boulevard for like 25 years. I moved now to the north side of town, but I definitely have seen Moreno Valley, I think, improving. I like the direction it's going in. I drive to Paris and Riverside every week and I definitely see them going in that direction of, you know, these warehouses are just turning up overnight and I think that's kind of the market we're in, the direction we've gone and I think we should continue to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel. Next three speakers is Deborah Craig, Patricia Campos and Luis Palomares.
Good evening. This is not my first time speaking in support of Skechers. I did it in 2009, but this is a big game, I mean, this is a much different deal because Skechers, we see what a wonderful facility it is. It has far exceeded my own personal expectations. The track record is just amazing, so I, you know, hope you do support it. More importantly, Skechers was a game-changer for the city. Without it, look at all the development we have with other industry. Moreno Valley Unified, who is my employer, they're no longer, I remember the time where they were one of the largest employers in the city. That, we can't say that anymore and we have Skechers to thank, this development to thank for that. And if you don't believe me, I think this is a little bit of interesting trivia, go to TripAdvisor. The number-one site to see in Moreno Valley is Skechers. So, so let's go Skechers and Highland Fairview. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next speaker, Patricia, is she here? Only once? No? Okay. All right, we'll go with Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, there was a lot of great things talked about here about Skechers and the project and the zone change and I hope you go forward and you do this because we need it. And, you know, a lot of people have mentioned so many great things about Skechers, but I want to mention another thing. I know they're going to give money to our school district also, so that's going to be good. And I think they're going to also do something about training students in logistics, so that's another opportunity we have. So this is a great project and I hope we go forward with it. And God, we're blessed to have a developer here that wants to do all this here in our city and bring revenue and tax dollars to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise.
No more speakers.
Okay, I'll go ahead and any council questions of applicant? Well, we pretty, pretty much asked those already, we already did that one. So, we will, I'm going to go ahead and close the, actually applicant, you had all positive, so you didn't have any negative. There's a rebuttal portion here for you, but there's no negative.
That's a change. Yeah. We came a long ways. But really, what I want to do, if I may, take the opportunity to thank those who really did speak in, in support of us. We really do appreciate it. There's nothing that feels better than feel like you're part of a community. I'm part of this community. This is not a job we're doing in some town. This is my town. I spent a lot of time here. Some of you know me, you've been to my home. And it does give me a great pride to know that we do have a lot of people in Moreno Valley that are working there. It was really a pioneering effort at the same time to convince global companies to come to Moreno Valley for the first time. It wasn't easy, but working together and thank to all of you who stood up with us for years through this project, other project, the first Skecher building and of course the World Logistics Center, it really does mean a lot to me on a, on a personal level and of course you, all the hard work you've done in the community to represent all sides and trying to make decisions that are best for the community and I do appreciate it. But also, I want people to know some of the things that you may not know. The building that we all refer to as Skecher Building, Skechers is obviously in that building, was designed in Moreno Valley. People don't understand that we have an office in Moreno Valley. I spent quite a few days in this office in Moreno Valley. I don't want to mislead anybody, we have places, other places in the country, in the world, but it's still, I call Moreno Valley my home. And the office we have here actually designed the Skecher Building. So whether you like it or you don't like it, it was created and designed in Moreno Valley. And we can be, we're proud of it because a lot of people from all over the world, we have over 1,800 corporate CEOs come visit the building. We've had over 75 ambassadors come and visit the building. We have had literally people from all over the world, delegations from different governments, the French government, even Azerbaijan, places I've never been to, have heard about this building and have came to look at it to see how you do it right. So we're proud of it, not because we've done it, is because folks in Moreno Valley that work in our facility in Moreno Valley, that are designing the building in Moreno Valley. This is a Moreno Valley product. And the next building, exactly the same way. When we mean about giving all the opportunities in Moreno Valley, it's not just jobs at Skechers, but even jobs at our own company in Moreno Valley and other own construction workers. Like the Skechers had over 1,100 construction workers we employed in town. In fact, many people I meet, they say to me that if it wasn't for the job at Skecher, building it, not working at Skechers, they may have lost their home. If you remember, we built it during 2009, 10, the height of the recession, there was over 5,000 foreclosures in Moreno Valley. People were losing their job, unemployment was high. And we said, in fact, that is the time to invest in the community, not when everything is good, when people think things are falling apart. Banks were going bankrupt, General Motors went bankrupt. A lot of companies closed and we said, you know what? This is the time to really show up the community and that's what we did. A lot of people had jobs there. On the general benefits, other, other than the jobs which are by far very important because it touches real families and real people's lives, it does provide some economic benefit to the taxpayer. Up until now, this building has provided about over $11 million in tax. I don't know exactly what the sales tax is, but it's probably coming close to a million dollars as well. There's also at least 400 people that live in Moreno Valley, they have a job there. I'm sure they go to the grocery store here, they buy gas here, they go to the restaurant here, they go to the movies and they pay taxes in our city. This is what we talked about back in the day, that it's just priming the pump. This is the kind of activity that helps us go on. But what particularly makes me proud is that it is a product of Moreno Valley and the product is just not any product. This is not a large building, but it's the world's largest LEED gold-certified building of its kind. It also has very advanced technologies in the building. Some of you who have toured it may, may have seen it. But it also means that folks in Moreno Valley have the opportunities to upgrade their skills, to get educated, to ultimately have jobs that are technologically driven in these facilities, that pay higher, that actually have a career path to ever-growing opportunities. So I'm very happy about that. And lastly, we talked about zone changes and other things. Things do change from time to time, we all do and we have to upgrade. We used to have video stores, now we have Netflix. We used to have, you know, record stores. Some of you are too young to have gone to buy a record, but there used to be record stores. Now we have iTunes. Things move on and we have to adjust and adapt or the world leaves us behind. But in our case, the zone change we're talking about is a small sliver of commercial zone property. We're surrounded by the World Logistics Center. To the north, literally the entire length of the project is commercial and office. We're exactly where it needs to be and we're upgrading the zoning to accommodate the future. So with that, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we're very to be here and waiting for the day that we can do a lot more.
Thank you, Mr. Rinzey. Thank you.
And we're going to move straight...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask, before you close the public hearing, I'd like to introduce a little bit more information.
Okay.
This afternoon at 4:14 PM, it was brought to my attention while I've been up here at the dais, the city did receive a letter from Abigail Smith. It's my understanding that that letter has been submitted to you. During the course of the public comment period, I have taken the, the opportunity to review that letter and I want the council to know on the record that of all the points that, first of all, Abigail Smith has drafted the letter as representing the Sierra Club. Mr. Hague, who had also submitted comments, submitted those on behalf of the Sierra Club. What I compared is the comments that were raised in Mr. Hague's letter, which we did provide a response to, are almost identical to the points that have been raised in Ms. Smith's letter to us today. There are a couple of additional comments or notes that at best, I would qualify them as speculative, loosely written and really are non-definitive, so they don't really warrant a response unless that commenter was to be able to provide some additional substantive evidence that she's asking for us to evaluate. Based on that review, I just want to state for the record that there's nothing in the comments raised in Ms. Abigail Smith's letter that would change any of the recommendations that are before you this evening. I just wanted to make sure you understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the hearing. All right, council deliberation, if desired. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, like it says, I stayed up late last night, this morning, looking at this and Skechers has been a very good project. At the beginning, I had my doubts, but over the years, like Mr. Benzavi said, things change. And you can't tell my wife any different because she loves to go to Skechers, so if that place was to close down, she would be very upset at me, so I'd have to say we need to keep it open. But at the same time, originally, it was the plot, plan was to extend or build Skechers building larger than it is now, so that's fine, that's fine. Skechers is a good business company for the city, brings in revenue, I understand that. And be honest with you, I have not heard any complaints about Skechers at all. It's in my district, I had spoken to several residents nearby and they had nothing negative to say about Skechers. And they also said, yeah, we could buy shoes there also. So that's, that's good to hear. Is there a representative from Skechers here, Mr. Benzavi? Okay.
No, it's not.
No, but I mean, the executive, no? Okay, that's, that's fine. A lot of my concerns were the infrastructure and, and speaking with staff today, we had a lengthy talk with my staff today and they pretty much clarified a lot of the infrastructure for this project. Turnaround, turnabouts, I thought it was a great idea for that area. You're going to do a lot for the infrastructure, for their yoplait, this which, which is, I'm glad to hear. We'll have a street that be able to go from Nathan all the way to Theodore and, and that would help out the businesses in that area also. So I'm grateful for you to put that in your plans and make that a part of the, of the project. So at this point, I have nothing negative to say. My concerns have been, have been answered and all I can say at this time is, you know, good luck. Let's get it built. Thank you.
Mayor Protembaka?
Well, we've come a long way. I remember 10 years ago, and I know that there's people in the audience, particularly Ms. Luis Palomares, who was involved in bringing the first 17,000 signatures before the city council. None of us were on the council at that time when the first project was approved. And there was a lot of opposition. I was waiting for the opposition tonight and I'm so glad to see that we have so much support in the community because indeed, this is a good project. This is a good company. This is a LEED-certified building and as you heard, the employee from Skechers mentioned that there's daily tours there. And if you haven't been to Skechers on a tour, sign up because it's, it's, you'll be impressed with what's going on. Many of us, you know, I'm 60 years old, remember when warehouse jobs, you'd look in the newspaper, when there was newspapers and the want ads, and it was for forklift operators and, you know, pickers and sorters. You know, those jobs aren't here anymore. The jobs that companies like Skechers has are very advanced in technology and our, our community colleges and our schools are preparing the workforce because things have changed. So if you have a student in, at school or, you know, a young adult that's not looking to go to the university but wants to go into the career and technical education strand, they should look into going to those programs because they're, I know that Norco had a very short, six-month project, program and it's now back to two years, but it's still a short amount of time for the money that they're going to be making. As a resident of the city, besides being on the city council, we do value, my family, my friends, the community does value a good neighbor, like such as Skechers, because they do provide jobs. And if you ever have time, go to their patio and relax and they have a restaurant there and they sell very good food. If you're a vegetarian, they'll have something for you too. And like Mr. Benzavi said, and it's true, you know, a company is not going to expand if they're not doing well. And they're doing well here in Moreno Valley. And I would repeat, you know, we can't be afraid of change. Change has come. It's here. Skechers is here. So we're adding the second phase and it's a good thing for the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when I'm thinking about this project, some things that really resonate with me and specifically about how the business is going so well that there's not opportunity to expand. And in the root of me, I think that every Moreno Valley resident wants to be able to live, work and play in their own city. And this is an opportunity for the employees that currently work at Skechers and now with this expansion, this is an opportunity to have that happen for more and more people. This would allow them to get, be off the road where they're not commuting, to be able to get home earlier so that they can spend time with their family and, and spend time doing things with their children and their spouses. And at the same time, keep more money in their pockets so they're not having to spend a lot of money on gas and transportation. So Skechers is a beautiful facility. The beautification of it is just something that's really amazing and like Mayor Protem mentioned, not only is the, the store really great, but the café, right? They're known really a lot for the, the food, the food reviews that they get. I think Ms. Deborah Craig mentioned that was number-one TripAdvisor spot, but I think on Yelp, the, the café gets a lot of positive reviews. So that's just, that's just an example of it. But in the root of me, I just believe that we should be able to live, work and play in our own community and this is an opportunity to do that. And not only are people working there, but the people that are going to be building this facility are going to be Moreno Valley residents, right? They're not having to commute all the way to Los Angeles to have to participate in a construction job. They can get employed here and do that here when, whenever it gets constructed. So I, I'm really excited for the possibility of this and other projects that allow Moreno Valley residents to live and work in their own community.
I just want to say as well, from my perspective, that Skechers has provided a lot of, not only economic benefits, but also social benefits for our community. Obviously, you know, the revenue that we get, you know, for our city and, and all of that as well. And Highland Fairview, you know, you have, the company itself has really been a community partner in our community. They've contributed over a million dollars just to social programs and, and all kinds of innovative programs that we have in the community, the school district as well for our kids. And so they really, it's great to have a partner like that in our community that really cares about the future of our city. So I want to say thank you for that as well. I will mention that there is a program that I think will also help because like Mayor Protembaka mentioned, we do have to start training our folks, you know, with CTE programs and those kinds of things. And so Mobile Learns, which is a program that we're going to be trying to pick up again, I think is going to help, well, it's going to pay for the tuition, the CTE programs that the students are in. So that's going to be another benefit for the community as well to hopefully provide more employees that are trained for the workforce. So again, and I, finally, I just want to say thank you to Highland Fairview and also to the staff and again to HF, Highland Fairview, for, you know, just doing the community outreach, doing the community outreach that you always do, you know, it's very thorough. And as you can see tonight, there was no, no opposition. It was all positive and I think that speaks volumes to, to the amount of work that you do in the community and how engaged you are in the city. So thank you for that. And so definitely, I support it.
Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you, Mayor. And...
Thank you, Mayor. And first of all, just want to say that I do own some Skechers shoes. They're extremely comfortable. I use them to go running. If you haven't been to the store, I highly recommend it. It's very affordable as well. So just, just wanted to throw that out there. But on a more serious note, very, very happy, first of all, pertaining to the jobs, the jobs that are going to be coming here to Moreno Valley, higher wage jobs and local jobs, like my colleagues have already said. Also, investment is finding a home here in Moreno Valley, which is, which is something that a lot of places in this country are struggling with right now. A lot of places over the past 10 years in this country have lost tons of jobs to, to things like automation, especially the manufacturing industry has suffered a lot. And so to see that we have investment coming here into this city, that jobs are coming here, that should be definitely something that we're very proud of. And, and that's something that I want to see continue as well, far into the future. And so the truth is that right now, the economy is good. Right now, the economy is moving, and we want to keep that momentum going. And, and so I'm also happy to see that, this is something that Highland Fairview and Mr. Benzeyvy, you've pioneered as well, with industrial buildings being environmentally friendly, going above and beyond the status quo. And also aesthetically pleasing, right? So you're not just building four walls and painting them and opening it and leasing it. You're, you're making something beautiful architecturally. And, you know, I'm on the construction side as well, so I appreciate those kinds of things also. Where it's, it's more of an art. It's not just a business. So I appreciate that. And, and also, like my colleagues have said already, Highland Fairview is very engaged in the community. Giving turkeys away during Thanksgiving, giving presents to kids during Christmas, all kinds of events that you're doing here, community cleanups. And this has been going on for years. It's not just something that has happened recently. And, and so there's a lot of things that, that a lot of projects, like the first Skechers building that was approved before I was here. But I'm glad to be able to be a part of this current project, and all the good things that are coming. So, so this, this project, I believe, is a symbol of prosperity far into the future. Not just today, not just next week or next month, but far, for many, many years into the future. And so definitely, I'm in support of this project, and I look forward to seeing it built and open in the future.
I'll go ahead and close the deliberation. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers one, two, and four. Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. So Councilmember Marquez and Councilmember Cabrera, okay, please vote.
Were those, were those as amended? Were those the resolutions as amended?
Yes, as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, and it carries. Alright, I entertain a motion. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers three and five, as amended. Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Please vote. Go ahead and do a voice vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Thornton?
Say aye, or?
Aye.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
That's what we do, we break it down.
Mayor Protembaka?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Aye. And then it was Marquez that made the motion, and second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, and the motion carries. Alright, that deserves an applause. I want to again, thank the applicant for, for being here as well. I know you just came from somewhere far, far away. But I want to thank you for, for being here. And also for, and also, and also for the community that's out there, and just for being very civil and, and engaged in everything and following all the decorum. So I really appreciate that. So thank you, and we'll go ahead and take a five-minute break. Good evening, and welcome back to the city council meeting, the regular city council meeting on April 16th. I'm Mayor Gutierrez, and so we're back here for the meeting. We're going to go ahead and start with public comments on non-agenda items. We just finished F2 again. And so if you have your speaker slip, go ahead and turn that in. We'll go ahead and call the first three speakers, and there'll be three minutes each. Scott Heverin, Carolyn Broderier, and then Rafael Bruguetes.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, I would just like to take this opportunity to invite and encourage the residents to participate in the annual food drive the NALC National Association of Letter Carriers has every May. It will be the Saturday before Mother's Day, May 11th, which is like four weeks from now. And we encourage everybody, and it's a nationwide drive, just to put the food, non-perishable food out by your mailbox, and your letter carrier will pick it up, take it back to their post office, and then it goes straight to the local food bank. So all the, all donations stay local. Some, some customers put bags out. Some don't put it all, anything out, because they don't know about it. It's all word of mouth. The post office does send out a flyer, and usually the week before, you take that flyer, you put it on, attach it to the bag, put your, your non-perishable goods inside the bag, and then the letter carrier will take them. Even if you can just put two items out, you know, if everybody put two items out, I think the pantries would be filled quickly. It's kind of important this time of the year to do so. The food pantries, they get a lot of attention during the holidays, November, December, they get a lot of donations. And supplies start, tend to run out this time of the year. So if everybody could, just please give, and let's feel, let's fill the food pantries up. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for that idea. Thank you. Carolyn?
Good evening. My comment is in regards to public safety. There is a bill before our state legislature that if it's passed, will make our society more dangerous. Assembly Bill 392 has good intentions. Its goal is to end unnecessary shootings by police officers. The problem is the way that AB 392, 92 wants to go about doing that. And for the record, I am someone who spoke out against a shooting in Riverside by police that I believe that, that I believe did not need to happen. My comments are public record, that the ones I made at the Riverside Community Police Review Commission on the shooting death of Hector Jimenez. But I oppose Assembly Bill 392. If passed, it will cause police officers to be afraid to do their jobs. This bill says that police officers could be put in jail if a subjective third party in hindsight concludes that police should have done something, things differently in a life or death situation. If police officers are afraid of going to jail for defending themselves or for defending others, they will be less likely to engage suspects and will contact fewer people. As a result, crime will go up. And also, it will be even harder than it is now to get people to become police officers. And the truth that many people don't know is that cops don't need to be scared into not killing people. Okay? The fact is, killing another human being is very emotionally traumatizing for police officers. Most of us don't understand that, because most of us have never been in a, put in a position, a position that required us to take another person's life. A much better way to end unnecessary shootings by police officers is Senate Bill 230. It was also introduced by a Democrat, by the way. Senate Bill 230 will establish the first statewide guidelines to clearly define when officers are authorized to use force. It will require that every California law enforcement officer receive the most robust training in the nation, strictly designed, oh, I lost my spot, to minimize, minimize the use of force. SB 230 will set specific policy requirements that officers de-escalate, render medical aid, and use, use force proportionally. It will set forth detailed standardized requirements for reporting all instances when force is used in our communities. And there have been other things. So please tell your state representatives to vote no on AB 392 and yes on Senate Bill 230. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Rafael Bruguetes, Tom Gerald.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. The real people are here today. Everybody leaves after the main, the main events. Ah, I want to talk about the last hike of this quarter, April 27. It'll be the last hike. It'll be a four-mile uphill. So for those that like hiking, this is the last one. They don't have them in the summer. They have them again in the winter. So this is the last one. It was an exciting night to see residents come out and talk about prosperity. Because prosperity brings residents to live in the city of Moreno Valley. And when that happens, The Soaring Book comes out. This book helps the residents in the city of Moreno Valley to have entertainment. May, June, July, and August are the best, one of the best times besides Christmas and the snow and all that. But these are the best times in the city of Moreno Valley that we come as a family. We have movie night, we have concert night, we have those events. We have so many good things that are here for the residents of Moreno Valley. Patty Serrano and the staff does a fantastic job. If you want to see them work, come out to the movie night. Watch them work. Because that's where you see them. You get to see the staff work real well with the residents. They bring pleasure to them. The other good thing about the magazine, and the mayor talked about it a couple of times, it's sort of warning, award, award or warning magazine for the project. Okay? Here we go again. Maybe we'll, at least one thing I do know, this magazine is valuable because we won another award in the city of Moreno Valley. That's very important to know, residents of Moreno Valley. We do our very best here to win awards, to make things pleasurable for you to live in the city of Moreno Valley. So when people say there's nothing to do in Moreno Valley, say no, there's a lot to do. We have a great staff. We have wonderful council members that help us to have things in the city of Moreno Valley. Enjoy your summer, but I hope to see you on the last hike. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Tom Gerald. Followed by Luis Palomares.
Tom Gerald again, speaking on behalf of myself and the Sundance Center. And I'm sandwiched between two good speakers, Rafael and Luis, very dynamic people. So, anyway, I want to thank, actually, I chatted down when Mr. Bruguetes brought up The Soaring Book. Great book and great information for the public. I don't know if it's current, but somebody told me that the Wind Symphony concerts are not in there. I don't know if they are or not. But if they aren't, that's something we really should have. They are incredible, those concerts. And, you know, for somebody to be able to get free concert-level entertainment locally is, I mean, it's a gift to the city. So, and so if they aren't, please make sure we get them on for next year. Because they do four a year, and I just think it's a well-oiled machine, and I've got many, many hours of enjoyment. And I wanted to thank you for the, a good call on Skechers. Really good to see a fully unanimous vote and public support. So good company, good people. So it's all good. I also wanted to thank you for the planning commissioner appointments. I couldn't attend the meeting, but glad to see you appoint Mr. Bruguetes and reappoint the two standing commissioners. I would like to, I don't know if we have the alternates, we phase those out or not, but I really think that's a good thing to have. I think it's a good idea. There's times when a commissioner be either business, or they got a conflict of interest, or somebody's a bad back, or sick or something, and all of a sudden you're down. And, and my heart goes out to the developer who's paid for that hearing, and they get all the way down, well, I can't have your hearing tonight because we're short, and, you know, somebody had, had a conflict of interest. So I think it's a great system. And on the subject, now I want to emphasize, no planning commissioner has ever asked, hinted, implied to me, but I think that the hundred bucks a meeting they get, I think it goes back to the beginning of the city. Maybe it was time we looked at giving a little bit more money. It's a lot of work to get ready for those hearings, and a lot of driving, I got to go out and look at sites. And so I think they earn it. And again, I want to emphasize, I've never had any of them. They're very selfless about their job. And so, but I do think, you know, it's a very, very important service, a very high-powered body. I mean, it equals you, because a lot of their decisions are final and this appeal. So, and then finally, the homeless, and that's a subject on its own self, but more specifically, the jaywalking, and again, more specifically on Sunny Me Boulevard, and like, these people, they walk out like zombies in front of you. Now luckily, and a lot of times I'm out late because I'll be checking the center and so on and so forth. And, but these people, you know, they're defiant, I mean, and they're wearing dark clothes, they, you know, get right in front of you. I don't even think they see you. And luckily, I'm a put-but driver and pretty observant, so I haven't had a sad situation happen. But, you know, I think it's an accident looking for a place to happen. So I don't know if there's anything the PD can do about it, but.
Thank you.
Bad behavior. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next speaker?
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, this is great. This is really great. And I would like to get to a lot of these activities this summer myself. We got a lot of good things happening in Moreno Valley. Our tax dollars to work here. Thank you for this. And Patty does a great job. Thank you on Parks and Rec. Okay, on another note, wow, we got the logistics, that building gonna come in. It's great. A lot of support from the community, more revenue, more jobs, more everything. So I'm so glad, after being on this for 10 years, 10 years, been fighting for these things to happen here. And, you know, they keep, they're coming, and we're glad. And we're glad about the other buildings out there too, all the other companies that are coming in, that's money, and revenue for our city. Now, on another note, I got this in the mail today. Ashley is running for school board. John Ashley, I'm going to support him. You know, I can't see anybody else that's running that's, I don't agree with their politics or what they're doing in the community. And thank you, Mayor Exing Gutierrez, for supporting him. You endorsed him. Thank you for that. And he has, he's worked in the community, not, he doesn't work in the community here, but he's involved in the community and the school with PTA. He has two daughters that go to Palm Middle, twin girls, and they're really involved, the parents, the Ashleys, they're really involved, and I'm so glad. And he has a bachelor's and a master's, so wow, he, he's on it. So we need people like this to come and get involved and run for these seats, because the school, the school board, as far as some of the board members, I don't agree with, with what they're doing over there. You know, it's all about our kids, and sometimes it's kind of about them. But, you know, Dr. Kitadore, I believe, is doing a great job, but some of these school board members. So hopefully, we can get that school board turned around and get people like Ashley and other people in there. You know, and I think in the next two years, there's going to be some more seats up. So hopefully, can encourage people to come out and run for these seats too. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any more speakers?
No more speakers, sir.
Okay, we'll go straight to reports. We'll go ahead and start with Mayor Protembaka. And Mayor Protembaka, if you could go ahead and just do your three reports.
Okay, I have three entities to report on tonight. The first one is the Mark Joint Powers. And at the meeting, the commission approved a maintenance district annexation and annual levies. They also approve, or we also approved lease riders to support the U.S. Vets conversion to permanent financing, and awarded a contract for the improvements to Van Buren, which will be paid for by the developers. The Riverside County Transportation Commission continues to seek your input for Reboot My Commute, which you can go on online, a public engagement campaign intended to assist in prioritizing limited transportation funding. Residents can post comments using various social media, text messages, or by calling 800-450-3650. So please visit rebootmycommute.org for further details. And today, we held our joint task force meeting, and we met today at noon. In addition to the city representatives, we had representatives from the state of California, Lake Paris, Moreno Valley College, and Moreno Valley Unified School District. And there is a lot going on. The school district is hosting the Third Annual adjudicated jazz festival on Saturday, May the 4th. Please come. Please come. It's gonna be at Vista de Lago on Sa- Saturday, May the 4th, right, the day right before Cinco de Mayo. The Moreno Valley Colleges Comprehensive Master Plan Open House is a community forum, which will take place on April 25th, and you can go on their website. Lake Paris has a junior lifeguard program, and they invite you to sign up. There's interviews, and there's tests that you have to go through to make sure that you're fit to take this program. It's wonderful. Once you graduate, you can get jobs with the state as a, as a lifeguard. So you have all that going on at Lake Paris. You also have the, the rowing program, and you could come down and visit at any time. You can go online and look at the dates and times. And I want to emphasize the Soaring Magazine once again. Every, every resident, every home should have one, and if you go through it, you can find many activities that you can participate, from senior citizens all the way to toddlers. And last, I want to say that, well, I'll save that for my closing comment. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And we will go straight to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, just have one item tonight. Just want to share with the community that Mayor Gutierrez and our city's award-winning Media and Communications Division have done it again. The California Association of Public Information Officials, they're known as CAPO, they honored Moreno Valley with an award of distinction in the digital communications category for our highly acclaimed video series called Mayor's Minute. Mayor Gutierrez hosts this monthly snapshot of city news, and it's produced entirely in-house by our very own Emmy-nominated media team. This last, this latest award just again, spotlights the great work being done by our mayor and city staff. And if anyone hasn't had the pleasure yet of seeing the Mayor's Minute, they can do so very easily by visiting our city's YouTube channel or our Facebook page. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, city manager. City attorney?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, we will go straight to reports, not reports, closing comments. So we'll have, we'll start with Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. So I recently went on a tour of Waste Management El Serante landfill. So Waste Management is, it's the green truck that picks up our trash, right? So the landfill is incredible. It's about 600, almost 700 acres. So I sat on the environmental and historical preservation board for five years, so part of me is like an environmentalist deep down. So I was really stoked to go out and just actually see what happens when we put things in trash and where it goes. So what I thought was like there was a big trash dump, which is trash piled up on top of each other, and actually, that's not what happens. So Waste Management, you can actually go on a tour, this is open up to the public, as long as you're a Waste Management customer, you can go on a tour of the landfill. And so I really encourage all the schools, all the parents who homeschool their children to coordinate with the Waste Management Company and take your, your children out there to learn about what happens when trash and recyclable material gets picked up. So what I found very interesting, there were two things, was one, they use a falcon or a hawk to deter the seagulls that swarm around the trash as an environmentally free, safe and sound type of way to deter the seagulls. And that was really interesting. And then that it's like engineered concerning the trash gets compressed. And lastly, you have your, your brown bin, your green bin, and your gray bin. And so it's very important that you put recyclable material only in the gray bin. If you put trash in the gray bin and it gets, it goes to the landfill, it then causes a hazardous situation. It actually aligns with our upcoming Household Hazardous Waste Free Disposal that is on April 20th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the City Yard. So please, please, please do not put oil, do not put electronic waste in your trash bins. Take them to the City Yard on April 20th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And just make sure that if it's recyclable, it goes in the right bin, and then for the green products, it goes in the, in the green bin. I'm really excited also about the CDBG funds and the way it's dispersed, the money that we're not only dedicating to homelessness, but that we've increased it by partnering with another agency to hit our homeless population at every angle is, is gonna continue to show a positive impact in our city. Recently, I, along with Councilmember Marquez, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilmember Cabrera, we all attended two grand, well, grand opening Karma Innovation and Center Customization and the vehicles at Karma. I think I have some pictures on my social media page, I don't know if anybody else does. But the vehicles are worth like $150,000, and they're amazing. And our favorite color was merino, right? It's a brown. And then Quick Quack Car Wash on Day Street, I think they're still offering free car washes till, for, till when? Till Thursday. Go get your free car wash from Quick Quack Car Wash. And the thing that I liked about it is they have three different vacuums. They have a really wide one, they have an air compressor and an angle, I know, that sounds like silly, then I'm tickled, that they have three different ways to vacuum your car, but I was really, really amazed by that. And I just wanted to say thank you to our police, they have been doing an amazing job of keeping our community safe. We've had a death that occurred, and you know, the homeless situation, and they're out there on the streets 24/7. They're quick to respond, they're very transparent with their communication, and I just want to thank every man and woman that's out there keeping our neighborhoods safe. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll go with Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, on a happy note, and I say this with a smile, because last week, myself and a staff member, Julia, went to a, went to Sacramento for several days, and we went to a cannabis conference, the state of California put on, and learned quite a bit, quite a bit. They talked about banking, a lot of concerns about, you know, the money being, cash being moved around. Well, the state of California, Attorney General is working with a couple of banks and credit unions to open up accounts. And, and a couple of the banks, Bank America, Wells Fargo, they opt out of it, and I'll tell you why. What, this is what they told us, was when the money's contaminated with cannabis oil or any, any other type of chemical that comes with weed, cannabis, it, it gets on the money. And that money is moved around all over the state, whatever. And the banks don't want no part of it for that reason. They don't want contaminated money. Where you gonna get a, a police dog that comes into the bank? And what do you think the dog's gonna do? He's gonna go crazy. And that's why, that's what they excuse the banks said, that they don't want nothing to do with, with the money from the cannabis. But the state is working with several banks and, and credit unions to open up accounts. And that's what they're working on right now. I just got some stats I want, I want to share real quick. The city of Oakland, they have approximate 380 applicants for dispensary permits, 380. Out of that 380, city of Oakland says that if all 380 applied and got licensed, that they would have over $7 million annually in taxes. And that's what they're shooting for. That was in 2018. 2019, they're looking at over $10 million in revenue with those dispense rates. San Francisco, 150 permits issued already in 2019. So these are the cities up north that are, are really, really pushing for it. City of Los Angeles, this is, I didn't understand, but they only have issued 185 permits throughout the city of Los Angeles. That was quite, it's quite low for a big city like that. But they're, they're, they're trying their best to do it. They've got many, many, over 500 illegal shops in LA alone. That's a lot of illegal shops. So I could see why the, your legal permits aren't being issued because these 500 is, they're doing pretty good out there. Real quick too, I just, I don't want to elaborate on, just real quick. You can get a degree, you can get a degree in producing, manufacturing cannabis. If, I don't know if anybody knows that or not, but there's a university, it's called Okerdam University, founded in 2007. You can actually get a degree in, in cannabis. I'm not lying, it's right here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this with the mayor and, and with staff, some copies. If, if you wanna, if you want to major in, in cannabis, this is the university, and they have degrees in it, and it all explains in this little literature, so that's something that you, you want to make some money. There it is, right there. I couldn't believe it, but it's true. So just for the people that are interested and want to know more about cannabis, and they don't want to go through our city, they can go to on the state. And, and that website is CDFA, let me, let me correct myself there. It's cal, C-A-L, cannabis, dot CDFA dot C-A dot gov, G-O-V. If you want some more information on the state, you can go there and you can get that information there. Or you can go to the city website. And with that being said, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Marquez. And then we will go with Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't have much else to say. One thing I did want to point out, next week, I'll be going up to Sacramento for the Legislative Day of Action. It's just a one-day event. I'm, I'm leaving the night before, coming back the night of. But I'm definitely looking forward to it. It's not my first time going up there. We're gonna have an opportunity to meet again with our state legislators, but more importantly, we're going to get up to date with all the bills that are coming through, the most important ones, and, and basically reviewing and hearing all the new legislation that's coming through. So I'm definitely looking forward to that and bringing that back and sharing it here for the next council meeting. And other than that, I mean, I, I don't really have much else to say. I'll keep it pretty short today. Everyone have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera. Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Okay, well, first of all, I want to say congratulations to the whole staff and the community for getting Skechers approved tonight. Fabulous presentation. The staff report was excellent, and what else can I tell you? You know, great job. My favorite holiday is coming up, 4th of July, so pretty soon, the applications will be available, so you can put your car, your float, and participate in the festivities. The city of Moreno Valley goes all out on the 4th of July with the culmination of the spectacular fireworks display at 9:00 PM at the park. I don't know what bands we're gonna have yet, but we always have great bands, get up there and dance the night away, because it's gonna be great. I'm having a coffee and conversation, or a meet and greet, on Saturday, April 27th at 10:00 AM until noon. I invite everybody to come and have some delicious cupcakes. I'm having it at the Cupcake and Espresso Bar on Day Street next to Costco. So come, even if you don't want to talk to me, come and have a cupcake. It's gonna be great. And I'm also getting ready to have the Business Roundtable, and there's just so many exciting things happening in Moreno Valley. But I'm really happy that we were able to get a 5-0 vote on Skechers, and that we voted unanimously, because it's great for the city, it's great for all of us. Thank you and good evening.
And I just want to say, there are a lot of exciting things happening in the city of Moreno Valley. I mean, obviously, now with the Skechers expansion, it's gonna be bringing more jobs, more economic benefits, but also, again, those social benefits because of the developer that we have here in this community. I'm also excited as the mayor that we did win the, the CAPO for the Mayor's Minute. I think that's exciting that this city continues and continues to win awards and awards after awards. So great, great job. And thank you to the staff for, for all of their great work as well. And by the way, the Spring Tastic was successful, so thank you again for that as well. I do want to say that I'm also excited about all of the things that we approved here with the CDBG funding. You know, I know it was in our consent calendar, but that's, well, not actually, it was a separate action, but it was over $2.1 million, you know, that of funds that we administered to different nonprofits and organizations. Some for, you know, for example, for the Homeless to Work Initiative, where we're paying homeless people, you know, to actually work and beautify the city, and then at the same time, you know, they're earning, earning a living. And then we have the Homeless Street Outreach Program, the new innovative program that's going to take a more aggressive approach to addressing the homeless issue in our community. But also, we have other programs, like the Catholic Charities. They actually do a lot, a lot of great work with case, case management and resources as well. I also am excited about the summer program that Hope Vision will actually be implementing in our community. This is for our K through 12 students. Last year, they actually did one very similar, and it helped about 300 students, and I actually was able to go to their opening and their closing event. And it, it was for at-risk students, it was a full-day program throughout the summer, and I think it was like two months, and it was a great program. They did art, music, dance for a lot of our youth during the summer. And it was free as well, so that's gonna be a great thing. The Brush for Kindness Program that we have for the mobile home repair, and also for the Single Family Residence Program, those are great, great programs that we offer for those that are in need, that maybe don't have the resources to fix up their house or to fix issues that are going on. And then obviously, we added extra patrol hours for our community, more police, more boots on the ground, and the Movin' for Seniors, and then again, the CASA Program, which is for our foster youth. So this city is doing a lot above and beyond for our community, and at the same time, winning awards, which is just great. And I want to invite everyone also to another celebration actually that we're having, and it's tomorrow night, and it's for the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program for Promoting Economic Development, and that's the program where we're actually employing students that are in, at, at Moreno Valley Unified School District. We're actually employing them throughout this school year in various departments, planning, also Parks and Recreation, we're employing them there, the City Clerk's Office, so they're being employed in different places, and we're providing them leadership skills, career skills, and then obviously stipends as well. So the celebration will be at Moreno Valley High School of tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. So if anybody wants to go to that, it's our first inaugural celebration of the Mayor's Apprenticeship Program. And I think it's, it was very, very successful program. So I want to thank the staff for, you know, we, we can't do it without the staff and, and their willingness to be open to that idea as well. You, you all did a great job with that. So without further ado.
Can I have a quick request? I got notified on a bad note. Mr. Bill Easterly passed away last night. People that didn't know Mr. Easterly is, he founded the Bills for Special Kids.
And it's, his first name was Bale?
Bill.
Bill?
We, we honored him here, we recognized him here.
Bill Easterly?
Easterly.
Okay.
He passed away last night, or yesterday afternoon, and I'd like to close this meeting in memory of, of him.
Okay. All right, we will close the meeting in memory of Bill Easterly, and we will adjourn the meeting at 8:15 PM.